Okay, well, let's get started. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session for Monday, November 4th, 2024. I apologize for my voice, but I promise you, I'm not contagious. So, that's the good news and the bad news. So, let's get right into it. And item number one, discussion item, is the Contract Award for Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements, and that'll be presented by Utilities Director, David Breeze.
Thanks, Mayor. Again, this is an item that's been, we've talked about it a few times, as far as the wastewater treatment plant needing some upgrades and some improvements out there. The plant was originally built in 1984, so we're, this year, we're 40 years old, and some of the equipment shows it. You know, we've got the original brush aerators on the two oxidation ditches that were original to the plant. The manufacturer no longer supports those, the aerator plates that do wear out and break on it. We bought the last pallet of those that are available and have those in inventory, and that'll change out the paddles for about one ditch. And so, once we get, deplete all of those, we're based on robbing paddles off of the other ditches, because we only operate two ditches at a time. So, we do have a spare ditch. The problem with that is, is if we have something go on with that spare, or the, one of the ditches that's in operation, and we have to put the spare ditch in operation, we don't have time to change those paddles out and stuff. So, that's one of the big, big aspects of it. The UV system was, was built early 2000s, electronics, a lot of electronic controls on the UV disinfection system. And, and if you realize what technology has done over the last 20 years, you realize that that's pretty outdated technology. About seven, eight years ago, we tried to do a little bit of a patch on it to try to build, to, to get it to where it would continue to operate. The patch has been marginally successful, but again, we've outgrown that. And our SCADA, our contractor that, that does the maintenance is telling us that that thing is, is very critical, in that if it goes down, we can't meet our permit limitations or permit regulations for, for disinfection. So, that's the second component. The third component is the screw pumps, which basically bring all of the influent of the treatment plant up to the elevation of the treatment facilities. So, those pumps operate continuously and, and are, again, they've been rebuilt once, but are near the end of their life. And then the fourth, which is the big, big component of this, is the increased regulatory regulations. We, here in the next few years, we will be required to reduce our phosphorus and nitrogen levels, our total inorganic nitrogen. With the inorganic nitrogen, we've been able to, to change the operation of the treatment plant in order to meet those regulations. But the phosphorus is a bigger challenge. So, what the phosphorus will require to biologically remove that phosphorus would be to add an additional anaerobic zone ahead of the treatment facility. It sounds fairly innocuous, except the screw pumps, where they're located, is partways down into the treatment process. And so, in order to utilize the screw pumps to take it back to a different location where we would have to put the anaerobic zone would create some real challenges. So, rather than replacing the screw pumps where they're at, the proposal is to at least evaluate adding additional, a new pump station more towards ahead of the treatment plant, bring the water up to the new hydraulic gradient of the treatment facility, go through the anaerobic zone in order to remove the phosphorus, and then pipe that water back into the treatment process. Fairly impactful in the, in the treatment, in the facilities and stuff, so we're gonna want to look at some additional options as well. So, we went, went out for RFQ, RFP here the last few months, had, had three firms submit qualifications to, and were asked to submit a proposal. Only two of those firms submitted a proposal. They were Burns, McDonald, and Moltz Construction, and, and the other one was Corolla and PLC Construction. We, the committee that included Hiram, myself, Scott Murphy, Bill and Ann, interviewed both of the candidates, had their presentation, and was a pretty much unanimous decision that we felt the best path forward was to go forward with Burns, McDonald, and Moltz Construction. The first phase of the project would be the evaluation, the conceptual design, and the design phase, which they are proposing a contract about $1.25 million, $1,238,255. Again, we haven't formalized or, or come up with the contract language and all of that, so that may change a little bit depending on, on what risk and stuff we are willing to take, or they, or we are wanting to shed onto them. But this would be a design-build process. This would be the first phase of the project, which would get us up to the 90% design, where we could start looking at construction. And then all the construction costs would be all open book, similar to what we did on the police station in City Hall, where the contractor provides us all the documentation on what the costs are, and we compensate for them for those costs. I think that's pretty much what I had for, for a presentation. Any questions from the council?
One question that I'd like to just get out there on the record is that if we, because of the aging infrastructure of our existing wastewater treatment plant, to construct a brand-new wastewater treatment plant is going to be upward of $50 million?
I, I would expect it would probably be-
Between $50 and $100 million.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just kind of anecdotally basing it on what Uray had to do for their treatment plant and some of the other municipalities we're talking to. So, looking at this, I cannot see this as being a, it's a necessary step, and I think it's a really good use of our financial resources, because this is not something that our community can do without.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of the facility that's in good shape and has a lot of life left in it. I mean, we are just cherry-picking those key mechanical components that generally run 24/7 and, and have a lot of wear and tear, and over 40 years have reached the end of their life. So, so yeah, the, the cost of a new treatment facility probably, in reality, would be $100 to $150 million in order to build all of those structures and stuff. The buildings and all of that stuff, the basins are all being, continue to be reused.
Just the, just the new addition we're gonna talk about this next year will be $30 million. The new, it might even be $200 million.
Right, yeah.
And one of the things I want to make sure that we're doing in this design-build concept and the evaluation is that we're gonna be looking at those things that may not have been included in the original scope, but during the evaluative process may rise to the top and be included in that. So, things that we didn't originally project having to replace or repair.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we're looking at all of those aspects, so that we're getting our best bang for our buck.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's, you know, in, in some of the cost estimates that Corolla has actually done for us in going through this process of facilities evaluation, they have been very conservative, I believe, in, in those cost estimates, a lot of contingencies in there. And as we start refining things down and figure out what's really needed, and, and there may be other things that we identify that are needed, and that's part of why the contingency levels were in there, because they knew it was more of a global look at this, coming up with, here are the major things, but as you dig down into those projects and stuff, you identify things that weren't included, you know, the electrical system, that now all of a sudden you need to, you know, add additional capacity in the electrical system. That's why the contingencies in these conceptual designs are included in there.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that we want to make sure that we're looking far enough ahead. I don't know how you anticipate what the federal government requirements are going to be, but I think we've seen a lot of criticism with the water plant south of town, so I don't think we want to get ourselves in that position, so I think we need to make certain that we're, we're fully ahead of the curve.
We've discussed this enough times. I'm, I feel like we have a really good understanding of what's it's gonna do to the budget, but we have a plan. Not only the 123 for this year, but already in the budget for $3 million for next year.
Right. Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, the, the $3 million is, is pretty much, is cash-funded from our reserves for, for 2025. Our anticipation is that we would issue debt for the, the major construction port of the project in 2026, and then those costs, we would, we would build into the 2026 and beyond budgets.
Thank you.
One question I have is, even though that this is a, the enterprise fund with the sewer fund, can we fund the capital construction project as one of our capital projects for construction? Or is it kind of siloed because of the sewer?
It stays within the enterprise fund, it's an enterprise fund project.
So, we don't have the opportunity or the option of using general fund dollars to help fund this, which is one of the reasons why it's being built into the budget the way that it's being built in?
I think as a council, one of our main, as a council, I think one of our- Our main responsibility should take care of the aging infrastructure that we have in the community as our main priorities, and some of the other stuff that just happens to come along, we should be able to, to address these, so that in the future, as Montrose grows, we're gonna need more infrastructure, and I think it's important that we try and keep up on it.
I was just making, you said it was four years old and mine now. You're not wrong.
Yeah.
Is that awesome? I've been around for a while, so it's the treatment plan.
Any other questions or comments, council? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have anything else to add to that.
He was so eloquent, right? Then we'll, we'll move right into general city council discussion. Council, anything in particular on your mind, minds?
Just a reminder that we have our great Candy Land holiday season coming up on us. Our city staff and Katie Schorer have done an amazing job of setting up and developing all these really fun events. And just a reminder to the public that all of those things are being put on our social media and our media pages, and it's a great opportunity for our community. We also have the Montrose bucks coming up before too long, and that's always a great opportunity to kind of double your money, not really double your money, but add value to your money. So, when that comes up, look for that. It's a great opportunity to add a little bit of value to your shopping and keep your dollars local.
30%, 20%.
So, I'd like to thank the city and congratulate you all who were involved in the Halloween activities. That was amazing. I mean, to the point where maybe next year, you want to think about closing East Main Street, because there were so many people downtown. And the kids seemed to have a great time, as did the adults. Yes, Anne?
Yeah, I want to, I want to add one comment to that, if you don't mind, that I had a couple of parents that said there were less trick-or-treaters at their house because the city did such a great job and people really, all their little kids had, had an opportunity to get out while it was still light, and so they didn't feel the need to go out and trick-or-treat in the dark. So, I think that that was a huge kudo to the city in, in our event.
I'm not sure that we tracked how many trick-or-treaters we had at City Hall, but I did some shopping on Main Street this weekend, and one of our local businesses told me that they had 1,200 pieces of candy and ran out, and they were giving one per child. So, to me, that is what it felt like at City Hall, that there were at least that many kids, and it looked like it. This business owner, the business owners I talked to were really happy about the event on Main Street. We hope everyone was, and thanks to all the staff and you all who came out to make it a really special event. And really, I just have to say, you know, Michelle Wingfield with DART, this was her brainchild to make it even better than last year and include the bounce houses, and we had a lot of DART volunteers out there, too, so just a really great event.
We had that experience of having the entrance to City Hall under construction, where one of the gentlemen stood there and worked with his tools, and he had concrete going all over it and everything, and so Ann ended up doing, I don't know what you want to call it, traffic control. And so, for my four, two hours that I was inside City Hall, since Ann was letting in 20 kids at a time, 20 kids were coming in, 20 kids were going out, a new 20, so I started kind of counting, and I would guess in that two hours, we had a thousand. That was my number. And then, of course, there was the hour before I got there, because I was out at the bounce house, the first hour. It was great.
Anything else?
They did, because we decorated it. And just to mention to people who might not have shown up, another thing that was different in addition to having the bounce houses in Centennial Plaza, but our Police Department and Public Works Department has some of their big equipment out there, as well as huge buckets of candy, so kids could get into the equipment. There was even a guy with a pumpkin head operating one of the pieces of heavy equipment, so just, that was another special add-on this year. So, thanks, Public Works and PD, for going out there. The kids love seeing you and interacting with you.
Ann, do you want to mention the open house and remind people about that tonight?
I'm gonna invite Jace up here.
Oh, I didn't see Jace back there.
I can describe it, but I'm certain I'll miss something important that Jace will mention. Thanks, Jace.
Sorry, I didn't see you behind, Dave.
All, all is good. Yeah, this evening at 5:30, we have an open house for the land use code update. We're wrapping up. We've got our finalized draft red lines out right now, actually, on the project website. So, folks are more than welcome to look at those, provide any feedback they have. But yeah, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM tonight, if you want to learn all about land use code and what we're looking at changing, we are more than happy to share. We'll have several boards. It will be kind of a traditional open house style. We're not gonna have a formalized presentation where folks sit down. If you all were at the last one back in April, it'll be a very similar vibe to that.
So, people just kind of come and go and not be seated?
Exactly. Yep, and it'll be at the, the PD Community Room at the Police Department. So, looking forward to it, and looking forward to kind of a long project wrapping up as well, so.
Are any of our consultants going to be there?
We will have Martin Landers and Jerry Dahl in attendance. They're flying in here in just about an hour and a half, so I'll be picking them up, and we'll, we'll have them ready to share on that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, too.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
It works, yeah. I can talk about Ogden if you'd like. Everybody's asking about Ogden. Do you want to ask first, or, yeah, okay. So, we put out the message board signs at the end of last week in anticipation of a press release coming out today. Looks like we'll do a video, too, as well, since it's a big enough closure. But the closure is scheduled to start November 11th. This is for the replacement there at, right next to, on the Lutzenheiser Canal, right next to the new apartments there, at the southern end of Ogden. The closure will be, so Kelly Drive will remain open for the neighborhood there, and the primary closure detour route will start up at Bridges Drive, up at the eastern end, so Bridges Drive will remain open as a primary detour route to get people over to East Oak Grove Road. East Oak Grove will stay open. We've delayed the, or scheduled the roundabout project to start after Ogden has been reopened for this one. But a press release will, could be coming out with a map here today. The Move Mo page hasn't been updated yet. Our website guy was out last week, but he'll be back on Wednesday, I'm told, so it'll get updated on Move Mo. And yeah, again, it's, like we talked about at the council meetings, it'll be closed through February is the scheduled reopening date. There's some utility relocations going underground, some utility extensions, full-on new pre-cast concrete bridge structure, and then cast-and-place head walls. That'll take place when the canal is off, which it's off now, so we're working on getting it all drained and ready, and then, again, closure on the 11th. So, if, yeah, if anybody has any questions, feel free to send them my way. It's hard to get all of that in six characters or less on those message board signs, so, but we got people talking, so mission accomplished.
Thank you.
Yep, here to report the third quarter crime stats for 2024 versus the same time last year in 2023, July through September. I don't think I see a lot of major increases, but to the tune, there are some decreases compared to last year, which is always a good thing. I'd like to highlight, really, a major decrease in sexual assaults, almost by half, which is, is awesome, and also, our domestic violence is down as well. I think that equates to more visibility, more presence, and if you'll notice, for misdemeanor adult arrests, this is one of the first times I can ever remember reporting this, but we're up almost 100 arrests versus last year. I would equate some of that certainly to staffing, although we're still staffing up. You will, however, see a decrease in our contacts, our traffic contacts, and our traffic citations. I'd imagine that has a lot to do with officers working on the misdemeanor arrests. In the world of code enforcement, as you can see, as we end, I think, the summer season, it was the summer of weeds, and 279 weed violations that we worked on versus 75 in the year prior. We focused quite a bit on RV parking, and honestly, a lot of that is chasing RVs around in our, from our public lots and some of the overnight issues that were caused. And then junk, as always, is something that we focus on. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Say, with the code enforcement, I think it also has a lot to do with having a really dedicated staff member that's actually being able to get out there and pursue some of these complaints, being responsive to our citizens. I think that's very valuable.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Jayden has done an excellent job. She will most likely transition on to a pre-codette status here this spring, because she wants to be a police officer, but we'll be focusing on hiring a new code enforcement officer, hopefully, at the beginning of this next year, so we can have some crossover training time.
So, overall, statistically, you're prepared to please?
I am. I would like to see more contacts in traffic, for sure, but I think as we staff up, especially, hopefully, this spring, we will be able to staff our traffic unit, and so you'll be seeing a lot more stats increase as far as that goes. But overall, I'm, I'm pleased with where we're at right now, especially in the, in the realm of hiring, and we are continuing to get applicants to the point where, not that we weren't always choosy, but we may potentially have to turn people away by maybe middle of next year, because we'll be fully staffed.
I'll be turned down again, huh?
Yeah, you're always welcome.
He told me I could be a bad example.
I might have said that.
Well, yeah, having to stop hiring.
Perhaps referring them to other agencies in the local area that we know are struggling with hiring.
Yep.
The one thing I wanted to comment on, I was driving downtown, or Main Street on East Main, and I was doing 26, and a truck passed me like I wasn't even moving. Had to be doing at least 45, and I know our officers are spread so thin, people are like, "Why didn't you pull him over?" It's like, "Well, you had to be there."
Yeah, you do have to-
To remind people that our officers are not omnipresent, that they're doing a really, really good job, but they have to be there, so.
Correct, correct. Well, I think it's interesting, driving down Main or Townsend, if you make one light and you drive the speed limit, you can go all the way across town and you have to stop. And I'd just love to pull up next to people at the next stoplight and look over at them as I go by.
Well, like I said, I think as we staff up, I think the, because, you know, that's something our public has definitely told us about, and traffic is something that we absolutely need to focus on, especially DUI enforcement.
One thing that concerns me is, is the fact that when you come off of West Main, and it goes to a two-lane, and then it goes to one lane going east, and people aren't stopping for the pedestrians, and some pedestrians aren't using the little flashing lights that are there specific, and it, to me, it just seems kind of dangerous when I'm crossing the intersection and a car comes speeding by me, speeding past the other three cars that are in front of me, to squeeze in, to get over, and then all of a suddenly stop because no lights are flashing, but there's three pedestrians in the, in the crosswalk, and I'm sitting there thinking, gee, somebody could have got hurt with that. And it just concerns me that, that both things are happening. People are speeding to get over, to go east, and the fact that a lot of pedestrians aren't using the little flashlights that are there for their protection. And I think that there should be an effort to be made to at least remind people that, to use those things. And by the way, thanks for the notice this morning about the traffic, about the roads and stuff like that being wet and slippery. I think that that's a good effort.
Thanks. We've done crosswalk enforcement in the past, both from a pedestrian standpoint and from a driver's standpoint, and so maybe it's time we focus more on some of those special operations, again, just to remind folks, we can do something like that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Any other staff reports, Mr. Manager?
Nobody's jumping up.
There's a lot of silence, so.
They're behind on his hands.
You don't have anything you want to tell us?
What do you want to know about?
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned from the work session. Yes, sir? Maybe an update on the construction on the City Hall, the front there, there was-
You thought you could dodge it.
Well, we're gonna be here for 30 minutes.
Yeah, how much you want to know about?
All right, City Hall, the undergrounding of the utilities in the alleyway, which is one of the most complicated parts of that project, is almost finished. We're, we can see the end of that. Likely resurfacing alleyway next week, so start to close that up. It was really our electric service and also the neighbor across Cascade was a big part of that, and yeah, transformers and sectionalizers are set now, so that portion is underway and should be closed up yet next week. The front, where you see the masonry work going on, that's probably the area that has been delayed and is lagging on our schedule, is the masonry work. It was kind of one of the most, the biggest part of the overall project was the masonry, and also that contractor is falling behind. So, we're working with them to, you know, coordinate those things. That's kind of even why we had the scaffolding in, in the front entrance through, you know, through Halloween, was just trying to keep that contractor moving and get that work completed. So, we are looking at, we're, we're really pushing to have completion with scaffolding down, fencing down, by the time we do our parade of light.
down, fencing down by the time we do our parade of lights. That's our goal right now. It's going to be close, so we'll keep doing what we can to move the contractor along, but that is our goal, to have that down, cleared out, looking complete from the outside by the parade of lights. There'll be, you know, lingering items, interior and otherwise, probably into mid-December, but our goal is to have it cleaned up on the outside by then, so.
Great.
Jim, could you, while you're right here, since we've dragged you up here, give us the community update on the leaf pickup?
Yep. So, we'll be beginning that next week, I believe, Tuesday, because Monday is a holiday. We'll be starting our annual leaf pickup. So, we, we do, we'll get to every, every street in town, so customer residents are welcome to call in and, and leave us their address, but we will get there anyway, so they can just simply leave the leaves in bags out on the curb, and we will come by to pick them up. If they feel the need, they can call into Public Works and leave their address, and we will put them on our list and make sure we get them, but either way, we will get there to pick those leaves up. And, you know, off the top of my head, I don't remember the end date. We usually do it for three or four weeks, and I'd, I'd have to confirm the end date of that, but it starts next week.
Thought I remembered, it seems like December third, December sixth.
That sounds right. I, I don't have it on top of my head right now, but that's, that's approximate, yes. We do three or four weeks usually.
Can we go back to the City Hall? I have a, a little question and issue there.
May I stay on leaves for a minute first?
Okay.
The bags.
Yes.
My understanding is the bags have to be clear?
They don't have to be, so we prefer them to be clear, but if, if, if somebody uses bags that aren't clear, we're, we're still going to pick up the leaves. We prefer clear bags so that we know what's in it. There are, have been times when people will put household trash or other things in the bags, which is unfortunate, but we're not going to not pick up the bags. So, we definitely prefer they be clear, whether they're their own bags or they get clear bags from the city at City Hall or at Public Works. We, we would sell clear bags. So, that's our preference, but again, if you use black or other bags, we are still going to pick them up.
Thank you.
The issue last week, I tried to get into City Hall, and it was a little bit confusing in the back as well as the front as to how to get in, and I was just thinking that perhaps maybe these next couple of weeks are going to be really busy, front and back, partially because of the weather, that perhaps may be a little bit more information as to how to get around all the fencing and stuff. I know with the back, they put all that fencing up against the wall, so, so now you have to walk around and go through different areas. It's, it's almost like a little maze that you have to go, and the same way with the front. I'm seeing all this construction in the front. You can't see the door, and I was just concerned as to how do one of our residents get in there? And I finally just said, I'll come back tomorrow, and needless to say, it took me a couple of days to come back.
You know, I kept expecting to see a minotaur or like scarecrows jumping out at me or something.
Yeah.
A maze.
It's, that's been a challenge of the project as well, I would say, just how we control access, obviously because we're doing work on all sides at the same time. So, it's, yeah, a moving fence. I will say that should get better because now that we've completed work on at least one side of the entrance, now we can leave that as our public access. So, it should, we should be through the worst of it now, I would say, and, and there definitely have been those days when, yeah, you, you may come in from one side, and by the time you go out, you may have to go out the other side. It was, it was, it changed that often, so. But we're, we're trying to work there. We know it's confusing. We're trying to put up signs and that sort of thing, but it's been a moving target, and I think it's getting better now that we're, especially on the backside where we'll be resurfacing that alleyway, that'll really start to clean that up and makes the access just less confusing. So, we, we know, we recognize it, it's on our mind, and I, I hope it's getting better.
Let's just think about public safety, that's all.
But public still can't enter from the back. Public has to enter from Main Street.
Correct. Yep. There was a short time where we had public entering from the back because of the work we were doing in the front, but that's, that's not the case now, and so, yeah, you're right. Public access is from the front.
Can we enter from the back now?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, right, but I, I saw it blocked off, so I just assumed we couldn't enter from the rear.
You, you can, yeah.
So, you didn't have anything to report?
Uh, no.
You got your thirty minutes?
Yeah, exactly.
Anything else? If not, we.
Doug asked me to give a quick update, a reminder on the ribbon cuttings that are taking place. I forwarded a couple invitations. One is for Magic Circle players this Wednesday at five PM in their parking lot, just in front of the Magic Circle Playhouse. The city partnered with them, as well as some other local donors and partners, to do that facade renovation project and to update their parking lot, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and to put in the new sign that's out there on the edge of the street. So, it's all done. It's ready to be used for the next season, and they're really excited to invite everyone who had a chance to partner on that. So, everyone here is invited, and if you can make it over there, November sixth, Wednesday at five PM. I'll be on the road to Denver in the big snowstorm, so I just heard about that, so we might have to sneak out earlier in the day. And then the county courthouse, did I have an email on that one? You asked me to talk about the county courthouse, but I don't know much details on that one without pulling it up.
During the reconstruction, they found a time capsule that was over a hundred years old, and so that on Thursday, the seventh, that they're planning on having a little bit of a ceremony and opening that time capsule and documenting that as well. And I think it's a great opportunity. I'm planning on going to that as well. I think it's really kind of cool dip into our history, so it's kind of a fun thing to do.
Did you say the time? I found it, it's one PM.
It's one o'clock.
Yep, one PM on Thursday. Thank you, Dave.
All right. I guess we are adjourned. Thank you.